start recording okay so we were here right huh so V T is monotonously increasing because it does not have any momentum parameter beta to decay any of the older momentum that was added right so this is something that we try to do in RMS drop RMS drop okay so RMS drop and so the formula is V T equals to okay beta V T minus one plus one minus beta I think it's again nabla W square yeah W T square nabla W T square and the weight update rule is the same B T plus one equals to the W T minus what is it I think it's the same right uh it's the same as this V T plus epsilon W T let me check the notes mm yeah okay that's the it's the same yeah so the only difference that we are doing here is that now we are adding this momentum parameter beta right beta added so because of that there's the again the concept of exponential decay so because of that we have exponential decay of uh older momentum exponential decay of V T no of older momentum or older updates so now V T is not always monotonously increase uh it V T is not anymore going to monotonously increase right so yeah so for some reason after reaching the minima RMS prop keeps oscillating this happens because the learning rate might become constant okay uh here if the learning rate is constant the algorithm will keep on jumping between A and B okay so what happens is that after some point uh the decay happens so much that now your uh moment for your learning rate has now become constant right so suppose there's something like this right this is a curve and you start here and the learning rate is quite big or maybe not there you start somewhere here learning rate is quite big it makes you jump here right and you again calculate a gradient here and this causes you to jump back to A and now you again jump back to B and you again jump back to A and so on so this is the oscillation state of yeah of what's the spelling of oscillation okay O S C I right so this is the oscillation state of RMS prop this is an issue in AdaGrad as well so firstly AdaGrad had two issues right so AdaGrad was sensitive to firstly AdaGrad right so it was sensitive to initial rates right initial parameters let's say that right initial hyperparameters and I think this is the reason why this oscillation happens because uh it's very dependent on what your starting value of eta naught is right or what your starting value of eta is so this is the first issue with AdaGrad that it's really sensitive to the initial parameters and the second one is that if the initial gradients are large the learning rates will be low for the remaining of the training yeah right because it is monotonously increasing so this itself is the second drawback of uh AdaGrad this part right so because of this what will happen is that uh if the initial learning rates itself or for or the initial update for any weight were really high so because of that what will happen is that your learning rate which will start from here it could have a sudden decline to some uh some place down here so yeah the issue here with AdaGrad was that because if the initial learning rate is extremely high so because of that the let's say I'll draw I'll draw a propaganda right so this is eta and uh this is the number of epochs right epoch let's say one hundred two hundred three hundred and four hundred so what will happen is that if the initial uh learning rate or the initial update for any weight W are really high the learning rate would drop to a very low value in the first stage of the training itself like in the first hundred uh epochs itself it has dropped to a really low value so from here onwards it won't update a lot and it will start becoming constant right maybe not that low but maybe something like this right so because it has reached a lot of uh because it has reached a really low value because of that the update won't be as large and because of that your uh learning rate has no way of recovering because again in AdaGrad we do not have the uh momentum uh momentum parameter beta here right this is not something that we have a problem in RMS prop so RMS prop only has this one issue that it is sensitive to the initial hyperparameters it does not have the second issue of uh AdaGrad but this first one persists right RMS prop same as one of AdaGrad okay so because of this now we have add a delta okay add a yeah add a delta now so add a delta even tries to resolve this issue right that it's that all the uh variants of the gradient descent algorithm that we have seen so far that is uh uh sorry AdaGrad and RMS prop these two are sensitive to the initial learn hyperparameters especially eta naught right so add a delta doesn't even ask you to set what eta naught is right so it is free from eta naught and the formula is V T equals to again beta V T minus one plus one minus beta nabla W T square and here now we have a delta term which was quite confusing okay and again a reminder this is nabla this is delta both are different right we use nabla to show gradients we are using delta to show something else here and this new term here is mm it is U T minus one plus epsilon upon uh V T minus one or no just V T plus epsilon and we multiply this by the gradient of W T right now your updates are done based upon this new delta that we are calculating that a W T equals to W plus W sorry uh delta W T okay and U T gets updated this value uh U T gets updated in a similar fashion to how V T was being updated just to no it's the same yeah okay so can please someone tell what's the difference between U and V here like just to make this session a little interactive difference between uh U and V can someone please tell us like how are these two different uh the entire thing is in front of you just even a random guess like even the wild list guess that you know it's wrong just anything anyone
one of it is in hyperparameter
yeah no
like V
so V is this part V is this part right U is
oh yes
so wh- how are these two different because see firstly they they have similar structure
it looks similar
yeah it is similar so but there is still a difference right why because if it was the same thing then we won't need two different variables right so why are there two variables here
one is yeah sorry yeah yeah sorry
no go ahead man
one is with delta
yeah
another one is with nebula
yeah so that's one difference okay so now what is uh this nabla term what does nabla show
gradient
gradient what does delta show
change in something no but
where is delta written here
uh it's with the history
this part right
mm
yeah so now if you again look at what the delta term is can you infer what the delta term actually is basically because let's just make this this is one term
some fraction of the gradient again
yeah so
you know some
again the gradient right
mm
so this is again similar to the gradient like it is some scaled version of the gradient right
yeah some attachment to the gradient
so what is this now
uh so this is again um mul- uh
so like uh the we have been seeing this since week four right since so like what is this term
this is basically uh taking into account the previous history
yeah the previous history and there's a very good term for that like what it's what is it called it starts with an M what's the M word here
momentum
yeah so this is literally the momentum right yeah and how are we able to identify that this is the momentum because there's the gradient right this gradient is being scaled by something okay the new gradient is being scaled by one minus beta and the old gradients is being scaled by beta right so this is the momentum update history right right so again what is this term like we discussed earlier this is just a scaled version of the gradient right
yeah
so in the essence it is still a gradient
mm
yeah this is still a gradient so what is this now this whole thing
again the scaled version so instead of taking direct gradient we are already taking some scaled version of the gradient and that scaling is based on some kind of adaption to you know uh the change that we are trying to uh incorporate
yeah yeah so that's the entire thing so both of these things are just momentum histories both of them are momentum right both of them are just update histories so what's the difference here the difference can be found in this itself right because this is the only different term in both of these right and we know this is the gradient so this is not changing this is the term of interest right here you can see there's a two there's a slight difference in U and V right here U is T minus one while V is T right so what does that tell you this is T minus one we know that U is a momentum right and we know that V is also momentum V is the momentum for the Tth iteration and U is the momentum for the T minus oneth iteration right so how are these two related
sorry I have one question here I just joined so maybe I missed out on the previous thing when we are dividing by root of V T plus epsilon
yeah
this V is uh s- what are we taking this V is
this part is just the uh momentum that we are calculating momentum below however whatever the term is you'd want to use
okay okay got it
so this is something that's
I think one is like a current iteration and U T is like a iteration for our next one
yeah this is the current iteration and this is the previous iteration
yes yes
that's literally it okay so this is the gradient this is the momentum in the previous iteration right and this is the momentum in the current iteration right so maybe we should take some numerical in just in case right so
what does this indicate the momentum the previous moment I mean the current previous momentum divided by the current momentum
yes and we are basically seeing that how is the momentum changing based upon what the pre- previous momentum was right so let's suppose the previous momentum was two and the current momentum is three right so what can you tell like this should be greater than zero or less than zero sorry uh greater than one or less than one
less than one
less than one right and we are multiplying a less than one term with the current gradient
mm
right so because we know that the previous momentum was was less and the current momentum have now increased maybe we should not jump a jump so much right because earlier it was low now it's high and there's a pretty nice graph for this in the slides itself mm let me try and find it yeah this one okay so here you can see that V Z at zero here right at W zero the momentum is higher when you compare to W two right it is higher right because here the tangent is steep and here the tangent is not as steep okay so here what will happen is that if we consider the previous momentum and if we do this thing uh W naught by W one and the gradient right because U T and W T both are just basically the gradients right okay and we know that uh the uh gradient of W naught is bigger than gradient of W one so what would this value be this value would be uh greater than or less than one this term it should be greater than one right because this term is bigger than this term right so that's the intuition behind aga delta itself that we are considering what the previous momentum was and based upon that we are calculating what the current it uh current learning rate should be for the Tth iteration okay maybe it will be better if we go through the example that was in the slide itself like this one right so okay they start with what are the basic things that they are starting with okay this I'll copy this okay so epsilon is ten to the power negative six beta is point nine V negative one is zero U negative one is zero right so again I might make some mistakes in the calculation so that's why I was wanting that everyone should be on the same page regarding these things so just to reiterate V and U both of these are just momentum right so that's why they have this similar starting point uh of V negative one to be zero and U negative one to be zero right this is something that we already saw in momentum based gradient descent and Nesterov accelerated gradient descent in week four itself okay so should we start
okay
okay so what would V one be right so V one would be beta V negative one plus one minus beta or uh gradient W one whole square okay this term is zero right so this should basically reduce down to this term one minus beta W one whole square right this much is clear
uh that would be beta V zero right which you cancel out
this should be beta V zero not V one yeah V zero okay
okay
so this is beta V zero and we know that uh be uh beta is point nine so this should be point one uh gradient of W n- zero whole square not W W one W zero yeah thank you for pointing that out it should be W zero not W one okay let's check if I did something wrong okay no so here you can see that V naught is equals to point one gradient of W naught square okay so that mu- that much is fine so next thing that we would calculate is I think it's delta W right next thing we'd calculate is delta W naught sorry delta W naught yeah because our current iteration is T equals to zero okay I should write that down may too maybe that we are currently doing for T equals to zero so T equals to zero right so what should this formula be it should be delta W naught should be equal to square root of U T minus one T is zero so we'd have U
one minus minus one
right and then in the denominator part we'd have V minus one sorry no V zero plus epsilon right and uh nabla W T okay
that is zero
yeah uh
W zero
yeah W zero okay yeah so see that's why I've been wanting to like for everyone to be on the same page because I will make silly mistakes like that okay so what would this uh boil down to so now we know that this is zero right this was already told that that is zero so we'd have negative root epsilon upon what is V naught V naught is point one uh nabla W whole square plus epsilon right and we multiply this again by nabla of W naught okay can this uh reduce down
we can write the value of epsilon right
oh yeah epsilon is like something really
isn't it is defined right
it is ten to the power negative six so it is something really small I'll make it a whole root I can make it a whole root right so it is ten to the power negative six upon point one uh this whole square plus again ten to the power uh negative six right it is this so can this boil down to something I think yeah because we can take ten square out we can take ten out and inside it will remain ten to the power minus three right is it not public
uh public means
uh I think the meeting is not public again so people can't join okay yeah so yeah so uh how what how would this reduce down even further I think what do what do the slides have the slides have nothing they have just written it like epsilon and all okay okay they have not uh replaced things that uh because see this part right they have still kept it like that because the uh notation becomes too hefty okay so I'll just leave it at that no need to reduce it
instead of ten raised super minus six you can again write the epsilon and it will be left out with that
yeah so we can just have it as yeah we can just have it left at this right V naught plus epsilon W naught let's just leave it at this okay so no need for anything extra V naught plus epsilon okay so using this now we can calculate what W one should be right if W one should be W naught plus delta W naught right from uh this formula from this formula right
yes
so this should again be left as that itself and uh should we try to reduce it down further we can leave it at that right and then we can calculate what U naught should be right so you not we'd use a similar formula to that so beta U minus one plus one minus beta nabla uh W naught square right it is the W naught square right yeah W naught square
gradient gradient of uh W zero whole square no while while calculating U zero we take uh delta right
no yeah it's delta yeah not nabla yeah that's what I was asking so yeah nabla here for this part okay so uh this is again zero right so we'd end up with point one of delta W naught square okay now this is delta W naught square so sorry that is delta W naught right so if we try to again uh reduce that so it should become something like this right W naught square and point one here right point one into yeah so so far it's cool right like so far it's correct this is one we had this is another one we had this is another one we had and this is the another one we had the final one yeah and now similarly we'd again calculate stuff moving on so I think it should it should be like well I won't say it will be easy but it should be a similar process that we uh we have V one right so we do beta V naught plus one minus beta uh nabla W one whole square right and beta V naught uh we already calculated what V naught is it's that really big term right so point nine into point one it should give something like point zero nine and we are multiplying it by uh okay so nabla W square W naught square there and here we'd have point one into nabla W one square right so this should be the new term yeah it's the new term okay and so on and so forth we'd again calculate stuff so maybe we should do a few more iterations sorry of um maybe we should complete this iteration so this is T equals to one right
is beta is given
yeah beta is given as point oh point uh nine I think or no it's
point zero nine
it's given as point zero nine yeah it's given as point zero nine beta is given as point zero nine and that's why uh one minus beta became point one
but here it's in the image
yeah I have written this as uh point zero nine right this this term is actually beta into one minus beta right this is you'd actually get this because
got it
the starting term is this right and if you expand V naught it is beta one minus beta uh nabla W naught square right
okay
this is point nine this is point one so you know what the product turns out to be
yeah yeah yeah
so it's that I just skipped a step there I mean I just did that in my head I did not write that down
got it
yeah okay so uh next we'd calculate delta W one right delta W one would again be uh U one minus sorry not U one U zero minus epsilon upon V one minus epsilon or plus epsilon I think it's plus right
yes
yeah it's plus and then we multiply this by nabla W one correct so if we ignore the If we ignore these terms, because they are like really small, ten to the power negative six, right? So we just end up with This term. Right? Now what was U naught that we calculated? U naught was this term, V naught is this term, V one is this term, okay, we can't reduce that. This is the best I think we can do for this, this. Right? What the, what do the slides have? Yeah, the slides have left it at this too, okay? Right, and the next term that we'd calculate is uh W two, right? Because W two would be W, it will be W one plus delta W one, W one, right?
Okay.
Which should be W one minus again U naught upon V one And nabla W one. Okay? This is, I think, the correct usage of the formula. Yeah, they haven't expanded, but it should be this. Okay, and now we can just finally calculate what U two should be, right? Or no, what U one should be. Because earlier we were calculating U naught. So the formula for this is again uh beta U naught plus one minus beta. Uh what is the next term? I forgot, it was delta W T, W naught square, right? No, W one square. So what was U naught that we had? U naught we had was this big scary thing, so it will again be Point zero nine epsilon upon Point zero nine epsilon upon Uh V naught plus epsilon Uh nabla W naught square plus It's, it'll be nabla, not delta. Yeah, it'll be nabla because we expanded that term and then we can expand this term, it will be point one delta W one square. And we calculated what delta is, so we can add that too, so it will be point one. Point one U naught and it, this should be minus because this, because of this minus, okay? Upon V one and nabla W one whole square. Okay, so I think that should be it, right? I don't think my explanation was as crisp as it could have been, but did that make sense?
Hmm, I got it.
Okay, so that's add a delta done. So add a delta is basically just this term and if you ask why are we taking uh Why are we taking a ratio of the old gradient, of the old momentum versus the new momentum? Why are we doing this? It's just to, uh what was the, uh what is the intuition that I have written here, let me check. Uh UT, okay, so when T equals to uh six, VT is taking points from two to six into account, okay, no. In steep regions, UT will grow slightly slower than VT, right? Because UT is lagging behind and we are in a steep region. Steep region like, something like we, uh W two here, so W two is a steep region. So in this, UT would not grow as fast as VT would, right? Because it's, uh because UT is still in a gentle region. And in gentle regions, UT will grow faster than VT as it is still lagging behind, okay? So we basically use this term, the fact that UT is lagging behind VT To uh not have to rely on any initial parameter uh eta naught, right? Because we calculate the learning rate using these two momentums, the ratio of these two momentums is our learning rate, okay? And that's why this is called adaptive delta or added delta, okay? Uh someone asked something, I think. Okay. Yeah, so next up is Adam. Okay, I don't think I should fall for Adam because it's like really, really, really long. But the basic uh, I'll just write the formula. So M T equals to beta one, M T minus one Plus one minus beta one. And uh nabla W, nabla W T, I think. Let me check again, let me open the slides. You see, that's why I'm not actually, you know, that fond of recording lectures because people just join and then they leave. So no one's actively wanting to be part of a discussion and that just, you know, ends up being not fruitful. Uh but anyways, adaptive moments, adapt, yeah, Adam. So it's just W here, right? It's not W T or something, it's just W written here. But it should be W T. Yeah, so once we calculate this M part, we try to average it, right? And we average it by using this formula. Uh one minus beta one T, okay? And the reasoning behind this is a long, lengthy mathematical uh explanation which uses averaging, distributions and all of that. Uh I won't cover that because we are more interested in what the algorithm usually does. Okay, so the next one is, uh I think beta two, M, no, BT minus one Plus uh one minus beta two. And I think it's, yeah. Uh nabla W T whole square, right? And then we again average this out using a similar method as, eh, we are averaging out M As uh VT ma- divided by one minus beta two to the power T, right? Am I correct? Yeah. And then once we have everything, we finally make our update. Which is W T plus one equals to W T minus eta upon Uh V T Plus eta And M T here. Okay, I'm not too sure about the intuition. Here M T is a running average of the gradients, we do this to not overly rely on the current gradient, but instead on the Overall behavior of the gradients over many time stamps, okay? So that's why we use M T and not W T. That we do not want to rely on the current gradient, we want to rely on the running average of the gradient so far, this thing, okay? Yeah, so this is the average gradient so far, this is not the current gradient, this is the average gradient. So there are two different concepts here. So in gradient descent, what you do is that you are calculating the gradients locally for any given point, right? Because if you remember what the code is, I think there was some code written here. Yeah, so here the code is written, so you are calculating the gradients inside the for loop here, right? For X Y in zip, X comma Y, you calculate the gradients and you keep on adding this, right? So what you're calculating here, this portion is your local gradient. And you, you agri- uh and you aggregate all the local gradients to get the global gradient that is D W. Right? Is that something that is clear? Because I think that's also important for Adam.
Hmm, yeah.
This is something we do in stochastic gradient descent as well, that we in stochastic gradient descent, we do not even try to calculate what the Global gradient is, we just use the local gradients and uh straight up make the update using the local gradients, okay? Uh one thing that happens because of local gradients is, let me try and show, I need to do this post. Uh I'll have to check activity. Yeah, this one. Okay? So this was something I was trying to do and this is uh This gif that you can see here is the momentum gradient, sorry, the momentum dis- sorry, ah The gradient descent taking a path towards the local minima, right? So here you can see that instead of following a straight up path from this to the local point, it went in a roundabout manner. So why did it do that, right? So like if it possible, so that it takes a straight up path to the minima and not have to go through this roundabout manner. And the explanation for this is that this can't happen because gradient descent calculates the gradient locally. And based upon this, it determines the best direction to move in, right? Because the gradient descent does not know where the minima is, it just knows the steepest Uh it just knows the direction of steepest descent based upon wherever it's starting, right? So if, if it's starting here, then the direction of steepest descent is in this direction. So it won't move in this direction, right? Because it uses the uh local minima, sorry, uh the local gradients, right? So GD would always move in a direction of steepest descent, which is the direction perpendicular to the contour lines. This is something we know from uh week four itself, that the contour lines show the direction or the path Of the steepest descent, right? That if the contour lines are a lot closer to each other, then that means that the gradient is changing a lot faster in that area. While compared to some area like this, right? So in this direction, the gradient would decrease a lot faster when compared to that direction. So because of this, the algorithm won't take up the pink path, but instead it will take the path that is shown in the animation and that's why it will go In a roundabout manner like that, okay? And uh yeah, so that's it. And this is the code that I've used, I know we can go over that later. So that's basically what it means that here, that's why I, we are not actually relying so much on what the current gradient is, right? Because here you can see that how it went in a roundabout manner, why not in this manner itself? So instead we rely on the running average of the gradient so far, okay? Because if you know about averages, you'd know that uh Things do not deviate too much from the, from the average unless they are an outlier. If and it's, if something is an outlier, then it would, it can heavily deviate from whatever the average of the distribution is. But usually, te- uh things tend to stay around the average, okay? And uh yeah, so that's regarding M T here, uh uh that was a really sloppy explanation of what M T is, okay? One way of looking at this is that we are interested in the expected value of W T, okay? We are interested in the expected value or the average value of what the gradients are. But as it can't be computed practically, because as it has shown, to compute the Average of the gradients, you'd have to go over the entire data set once. And if an entire data set has something like ten million points, then that's not feasible, you can't do that. So especially if we have stochastic, yeah, so we compute M T as the exponential moving average, yeah? So this is something called a moving average. Uh if you use something like trading view or something for stock trading and all, you might have no, seen Indicators like moving averages, exponential moving averages, weighted moving averages and so on and so forth. So what they basically do is that, uh maybe I can just open trading view too. So do you know what a moving average is? Does anyone know what a moving average is?
Uh, sorry, I have no idea.
Okay, so what a moving average basically does is that suppose that we have, you know what a candlestick chart is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what a moving average is, it would take, suppose we are at this candle, right? We are at this date, so it will go ten days behind. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten and not any more than this, right? It won't go in uh this entire direction, is there a drawing? I think there's a drawing tool available. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so it would say, it would just stop right here, uh at this candle, right? It won't go for this, it would just stop right here and it would only Uh include these ten candles that we counted right now, okay? So it would calculate their averages and that would be the average for this candle, this moving average, right? And the moving average length here is ten, right? Now suppose that a new candle gets added, uh like suppose that if we start from this candle. So we can say one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, that's it, right? So we can calculate the average for these ten candles and we get the moving average Uh the ten moving average for this candle, right? So now, but if we move from this candle to this candle, right, the green one. What would happen is that the ten previous candles that occurred For uh the ten previous candles occurred uh would change, right? So now uh this would be the new uh new neighborhood of ten, right? Uh does that make sense?
Sorry, I didn't quite get it.
Uh, okay. I'll copy, I'll make a screenshot. Okay. Suppose that we are starting here. Right?
Okay, yeah.
And let's suppose we are going five moving averages, right? That uh the moving average length is five, so we count five backwards, right? So what are the five candles that occurred up till this candle, right?
Okay.
So one, two, three, four, five, and we stop right there, okay? So we calculate the average for these five candles, okay? Yeah?
Okay.
We can calculate these averages, what would be the average? Let's say the closing price, that I'm averaging the closing prices, these ones.
Okay.
Okay? Similarly, I can average the opening price as well, this one, right? So I can average for these five candles and that would be my five M A for this red candle, for this one. Okay?
Okay.
That makes sense so far?
Yeah.
Yeah, but what would happen if now I move on to this candle? Because you know, in trading, what will happen is that new candles keep on being created, right? So now in future, let's say after one day, this new candle gets created, right? So we do a similar step for this candle, right? And what would that similar step be? Now we start from this candle, so we count
Yeah, check five candles before that, yeah.
Five, right? So now we take an average of these five candles, right? Earlier we included this candle too, but now that we have moved one candle ahead, we do not have to include this.
Okay, got it.
So this is a five moving average. Similarly, you can do a ten moving average, thirty moving average, hundred moving average and so on, right?
Okay.
So the property of a moving average is that the lower the length, the more volatile it is. Right? Because that will, that makes sense, right? Because small things don't actually tend, because small distributions don't have a large average While a large distribution will have a more consistent average, right?
Yeah.
So that's the thing. So what this M part here is, the M stands for moving average, that's it.
Okay.
This thing, right? So this is a moving average, this part, okay? So it
Okay, got it.
And what type of a moving average it is? Right now we looked at a linear moving average using the candlestick example, right? But we know that this is an exponential moving average because we have this concept of exponential decay applied on the weights, right? That makes sense?
Yeah.
So this is an exponential moving average, okay? This, this thing is just the uh momentum that we have been calculating, that's it. Right, and this is also being averaged in a similar manner to M. And that's the entire intuition for the thing, right? That we do not want to rely on, I'll just write it down here, we do not Rely on current gradient Instead a moving average of that. Okay, so that's Adam. And then there's Adam, then there's Adama, Maxprop and then there's Nada. So these are not something that I'm very uh confident about, I haven't revived these in a long time. But the only thing I know that, there's something called L infinity normalization. So AdamaX and Maxprop use that, that's the only thing I know. I can't actually go over that, if you know what AdamaX and Maxprop do, then please uh share that. Otherwise we can go directly to week seven. Otherwise we can go directly to week seven. So week seven now?
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Is that part in the week six?
Sorry?
The L infinity or something like that.
In week five itself, that's in Maxprop and Maxdelta.
Why you're skipping the week six?
Because I don't know that, oh, week six, because week six will take time.
Okay.
And right now we are low on time because.
So are you gonna take that uh later?
Hmm, maybe, maybe not, maybe we can uh take a P Y Q session next week and. Uh go over week six concept using that, because I think, because week six is again, it is something like purely in theory and numericals. Uh I'm not sure what to discuss specifically for that, okay, maybe we can, maybe we can try and go over week six right now then.
Did you took uh P Y Q session for uh week one to four uh in the quiz one?
Yeah.
Is that uh recorded?
No.
Do you have solved P Y Q?
I have, but for Q one, not Q two.
Uh huh, for Q one.
Yeah.
Uh please share it, okay?
Okay, so okay, in regularization, so this is the concept for week six, right?
Yeah.
So okay, so there's firstly bias inhibitors, this is something we know from M L T itself, what a bias, what bias inhibitors is.
But you are about to sh- uh like teach week seven?
So should I skip week six?
No, I'm uh like you were saying before, that's why I was.
You said that uh we should discuss week six, so that's why.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'm not actually too sure about that, maybe we can, I'll just have to go through the notes itself, I'll just read this out, okay? So bias in variance firstly, so what happens is that, again neural networks are. So a really bad thing about neural networks is that they tend to overfit, right? And overfitting can be counted in only one way and that is by regularizing uh the parameters itself. I think the slides are better for this. What is this, if you add a cat, no, this one. Yeah, okay, so in this we can see that there are two different curves, there's the more complex curve and then there's the line, right? So the line is a much more simpler model and the complex curve is a more complex model because of its soft degree twenty five, right? But the thing here is that the complex models tend to overfit more, while simpler models tend to underfit a lot more, right? So what happens is that simpler models like this line, they are bad at. Uh predicting output for both the training and testing data, right? And the complex models are good at predicting what the training data is, but not as good. Uh when it comes to predicting the test data, right? And this is not a good thing, because these models tend to just, you know, get stuck at what the training data showed. And they don't know how to react to any new unseen data, right? Uh the reason behind this was also shown in the slides itself, that uh yeah. So if you take some end at end data points from your domain itself or your uh what's it called here? Of solution space or state space, no, I think that's for A I, uh. What would the correct term be that we are taking points from the space given to us, okay? So we, if we take any random points from the space given to us and we train a degree twenty five polynomial model on that. And we would get a lot of variance in the curves, right? As you can see in the graph here, right? That the degree twenty five, for all these blue lines. All these blue graphs correspond to a degree twenty five model that has been trained on N randomly sampled data points, right? And you can see how much they vary, while for the simpler line, you can see that it does not vary as much, right? So this is the concept of variance, that a more complex model varies a lot, while a simpler model does not have high variance. But at the same time, a simpler model has a high bias, right? Because you can again see that it's not moving too much. Uh like you can take an average of all these models and the distance bit of any model from the model average is not much, right? Uh does that make sense? That we have all these models, we take an average of these models and the distance of each model from its average is not much. Uh does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the concept of bias itself, right? That how simpler models tend to not vary a lot, so that's basically what bias is, right? While complex models vary too much, so that's variance, right? And there's two different formula for that, so the formula for bias firstly is. Uh bias, right? So biases formula is. E expected value of F hat X. Minus F X, right? F X is the true data set that we had, F hat X is the, are the models that we are making. And the expected value of F hat X is the model average that I talked about, right? Variance of formula is this. I think it's the same as what the uh statistical formula for variance is, right? Yeah, it's the same thing. F hat of X minus F hat X whole square. No, sorry, expected value of F hat X. Expected value of F hat X. And you whole square this entire thing, okay? Uh I think the simpler formula of this was E to the power X minus E to the power X. Whole square, right? We can write it like this, right? And maybe we can even simplify this a lot more, so E to the power X square minus two X. E to the power, sorry, yeah, not E to the power X, expected value of X plus expected value of. X uh whole square, right? So this turns out to be expected value of X square. Minus two X, expected value of X. Plus expected val- not, sorry, not this. Two times expected value of X, expected value of X. Right? And then expected value of X whole square, okay? So if you try to simplify this term, you end up with minus two to the power. Sorry, uh two into expected value X whole square, right? Because this is the property of unexpected value, that you're taking expected value of X expected value, right? So this thing comes out as a constant, right? And if that comes out as a constant, you end up with just E expected value of X, E expected value of X, right? Which is basically just the expected value whole square, right?
Correct.
And then you add that by expected value of X whole square. Damn, my handwriting is good right now. And E to the power, not E to the power, expected value of X square minus expect, sorry, plus. Oh no, minus, yeah, minus expected value of X whole square, okay? So this is variance, this this formula. Okay?
Yeah.
So that's just a statistic one, or statistic one or statistic two, it was discussed, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so next thing comes up is that. Complex models have a low bias while high variance, right? And simpler models have high bias but low variance, right? And there's a bias variation trade off that we already studied in M L T, M L S, I think M L S, no, I think M L T, yeah. Okay, and high variability of models suggests that a model's performance is dependent upon a training data. So which is not something that we want, we want a model that generalizes well. So there's also the formula for M S E, right? So the mean squared error. It can be written as expected value of Y minus Y hat square. Right? Because it's exactly this, and this is basically bias square plus variance. Plus some irreducible error that we also just happen to denote using sigma, okay? So this is irreducible error. Right? I think someone asked something, oh no, someone joined, okay, Shabal joined you. Yeah. Okay, so this is mean squared. Okay, and then there's the entire section on what estimating error is, okay? So let me not try to do the maths, but let me still get to the summary here. We are interested in knowing the expected value, this thing, okay? We are interested in knowing this, but we can't estimate this correctly because we do not know what F is, right? Yeah, we do not know what F is, okay? Because uh yeah, so this term is just Y hat of X, sorry, F hat of X, right? Because we are trying to predict a function and this is F of X, right? Now we do not know what F is, we are coming up with F hat of X, but that does not help in coming up with F, right? We can just try to make a good guess for what F is and that's why F is an unknown value, okay? So because of this, we can't actually just come up with a good estimation of what this term is, okay? So we can try to solve this and it becomes, should I do the maths here? Or do you remember the maths? Because it's just the same as the lecture itself. Like do I need to do that here? This is basically just a proof that the test error is much more closer to the error of the model than the training error, right? Do do you remember this proof or do you know where to get this proof from? Can you just please say yes or no? Uh okay, I just.
Yeah, please could.
Okay, so it's discussed in, I think, these two lectures. It's discussed in these two lectures, uh where is it coming? Yeah, I should discuss in this lecture, right, these two ones. Okay, so it just basically is a proof that, I'll just write the summary of the proof, right? So it's just a proof that true error is a lot closer to the test error and not closer to the training error, okay? It's just the proof. Uh yeah, test error depends upon. Um did it, okay, as, okay, just give me a moment here, let me just go through the notes. As we are considering the test data mode right now, why? Because of the case through this test data, yeah, so we just end up with this. And which is D V J, two error equals test error plus summary is one also. Okay, so the summary of or the conclusion of the proof is just that, true error. Equals to test error. Plus a really small constant, okay? So this is what the basic uh end goal or what the conclusion of the proof ends up being. Uh maybe you can find it here, it's, yeah, this is the proof, this thing. Okay, so maybe just try and go through that and the end uh it just ends up becoming this itself. That, the, where is it written? Okay, it's not written, but it's, this is the proof itself, right? This is the conclusion of the proof. While at the same time for training error, if we discuss the same thing, because right now we are only discussing about the test, right? For training error, what happens is that, uh true error. Equals to train error. Plus some constant, now this is not a small constant, it can be a large constant. And on top of this, we also have the model complexity that we denote as, uh what's this symbol called? Gamma, is this gamma?
Omega, omega, right?
Omega, omega, yeah, capital omega, yeah. What's the lower case omega like? I forgot. Uh model complexity. Okay, so this is just a statistical proof, there's like really long-winded proof and the statistical proof basically says that. True test error is a lot, that the test error is a better representation of the true error than the train error, okay? Because if you go through the train error route, then there's this constant and there's this model complexity that need to be added to the train error. Only then you get the true error, right? While if you're only dealing with a test error, then you only need to add a really, really small constant and then you'll get the true error. So that's why the true error is a better representation, sorry, uh sorry, a test error is a better representation of the true error of your model. Then the training error, and that's why we should not rely on the training error and that's why we need regularization. Because regularization helps us generalize our models a lot better and that's why we end up with uh better test errors, right? Uh did that make sense?
Yes, so Ashan, by any way can we say, because training error overfits. There is a possibility of having a high difference between the true error and the training error.
Uh no, 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 that's not how it works.
Not necessarily.
No, 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 see, uh I think you mixed two concepts there, because uh see, train error and overfitting are two different concepts. Because uh train.
No, no, I know, yeah, this.
Yeah.
No, I, yeah, I know, those are two different concepts, but what I'm trying to understand here is. Uh whenever we uh you know, work with the training data, okay, the error that we get with the training uh data. We will try to come, because we know the uh Y values for the training uh training data. We try to model our uh uh en- entire setup in such a way that we. Try to minimize the loss there.
Yeah.
Okay, but in that process, because we are trying to come close to the actual values, we tend to kind of. Not really overfit, but tend to come closer to the true values, so in that process. Uh because the actual Y is known. I don't know how do I put it, uh I may not be very good at.
Uh I think I get you what you were saying, because you're saying that you have the training data, right?
Yeah, and the labels are known.
Yeah, and the labels are known, right? But at the same time, what you're doing is that, uh unless you have the entire universe's set, like if we're talking about set theory. If you have the, unless you have the entire universe's set as your training data, your models can't learn everything about the universe, right?
Yeah, that's where, that's where what happens is, there's a larger diff- that. There is a possibility of having a larger difference between the training error and the true error.
Hmm, yeah. Uh yeah, that's the entire thing, yeah, okay, yeah, I get your point, yeah. So that's what you were saying, that the the train eh, training error might be a lot less than the test uh true error. Because your model overfits, right? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And the difference is being caused by these two things, the constant and the model complexity, right? And this thing basically just tells us that, you know, more complex models will generate, will contribute a lot more towards the true error, right? So that's why we must uh rely more on the test errors, right? Because that, if the test error is low, then we know that the true error must be low. While we can't uh make the claim uh uh for the training error, okay? So next concept is L two regularization, okay? We got over this very quick, L two regularization, yeah, this one. Ah, so L two regularization is when you have this thing, you know, what, what is this, why do we do this? Uh for F G D, we are interested in getting the gradients, right? So the update rule is W T plus one equals W T minus eta. Nabla of law of W T minus eta of alpha W T, huh? Okay, yeah, makes sense, because this is your. Okay, yeah, makes sense because this is your gradient, right? And you multiply eta by that and you minus that by W T. Okay, so requires a very small multiplication in the code, okay. Let me go through the notes. I think my notes are a lot more crisp. Hmm. Okay, so this is again a very, very long proof which ends up with uh this part. This part. This thing, yeah. So you can again go through that. I'll just skip through the uh conclusion.
Yeah, well uh could you please uh take screenshot of that and put that particularly?
This?
Yes, particularly this.
Okay. So that's uh this is what the basic thing boils down to, okay? So I'll just try to have the formula up. Hmm, L two regularization. For L two regularization, L two rec. Okay? So we start off with by making the log function have something like okay, so this is the regularized loss, right? Regularized loss. And we have W squared, okay? So this tilde shows that we are talking about regularized stuff and no tilde means that it's just the normal stuff, okay? So if we do this, we end up with the gradient of uh the gradient of the regularize regularized loss and this the gradient of the normal loss and this should be alpha W, right? Because vector calculus, uh even I don't know what vector calculus is, so uh I just take it up and fade that this becomes this, okay? And then we try to have the update rule and the update rule would just be W T plus one equals to W T minus eta of loss W plus and minus eta alpha W. It ma- does it make sense so far till here? Because it's just uh basic stuff, right?
Oh yes.
Huh?
Got it.
Yeah, okay. So now we assume that W star, W star is the optimal solution optimal solution for the normal loss that we had, this one, okay? So that would mean that uh I think the gradient of the loss W star should be zero. Right? That's what it means. Yeah, that's exactly what it means. Okay, and then you consider some neighborhood around this W star, okay? And if you try to solve everything, you would end up with uh you would end up with this part. W equals to W plus epsilon, sorry alpha W, right? Many, many steps later, you would end up with this. And if you replace a few things here, you would end up with H W minus W star plus alpha of W, okay? Where W is any weight vector and W star is the optimal weight vector, right? Optimal for uh the loss function itself, right? But this is not we are uh this is not what we are in interested in, right? I'll just underline this. This is not what we are interested in. We are much more interested in W tilde, right? Is the optimal solution for L tilde. Okay? Because this is the one that we need, the regularized weight which minimizes the regularized loss function, right? And if you do a little bit of mathematics around this, okay, I'll just do it here because this one's small. Okay, so we need this part to be equal to zero. And we know what the gradient of L tilde W tilde should be. It should be uh H W tilde minus W star plus alpha W tilde equals to zero, right? Yeah, that's what it means. So this should be H W tilde minus H W star plus uh okay? Next we'd send this portion to the right-hand side. So H W tilde plus alpha W tilde equals to H W star, right? So we are trying to find, I think we are trying to find W tilde using W star, okay? So this can be written as something like W tilde plus I think identity should be added and then alpha, okay? Equals to H W star. This is clear, right? Why this identity vec- uh identity matrix is added here? Because W is a vector while alpha is a scalar. So that's why we need to make uh we need to have a scalar here because H is a matrix. Hmm that make sense? Right?
Yeah.
Oh wait, I did wrong. And W tilde should be taken as common. Right? W tilde should be taken as common?
Yeah.
And then we can just do this. H plus i. Oh wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
That should be in the divide.
Uh no, no. Uh this is vec- uh this is matrix multiplication, right? And because W tilde is on the right-hand side, here too it should be on the right-hand side. Right? Now W tilde should be H plus uh this inverse H W star. Okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Now how can we say that this is invertible? We can say this is invertible because H is a Heisenberg matrix. A Heisenberg matrix is uh what's the good term for that? It's an orthogonal matrix, right? An orthogonal matrix is always invertible. Okay? Uh we can maybe uh divolve this even further. That H equals to Q uh this is lambda Q transpose, okay? And because Q is an orthogonal matrix, Q equals to sorry Q transpose equals to Q inverse. Because H is orthogonal. Uh this much is clear? Now why is it orthogonal and everything like that? For that you'll have to revisit M L F, right? Uh linear algebra, b- uh especially you'd have to go through what S V D is, what eigenvalue decomposition is. Eigenvalue decomposition. And uh in that it's discussed here. Uh the M L F lectures are not as good, but you can maybe check out Gilbert Stein's lecture. I'll maybe link that too. I think most people should know Gilbert Stein's lecture, right? This one.
Yeah.
Right? So just search up M I T eighteen one eighteen dot two six equals time. So these are the ones that I refer for linear algebra. Yeah. So yeah, using eigenvalue decomposition may uh we can boil things down a lot further, right? So W tilde equals to Q lambda Q transpose plus i epsilon inverse, then again Q lambda Q transpose W star. Okay? Now this can be boiled down further because we have the identity matrix here. We can write Q trans we can write Q Q uh transpose equals to the identity matrix, right? Because uh of this property here. So we can use that and we'd write it as Q uh lambda Q transpose plus Q ep uh identity Q transpose lambda. Right? That's what they have done, yeah. And again, key thing to note here, lam- sorry uh lambda, no, this is alpha and alpha is a scaling. So I can write it to the right, I can write it to the left, I can write it wherever I want. I can't write W tilde to the left or right, right? Because W tilde is uh it's a vector and matrix multiplication has its own rules. So if it's written to the right, it has to be to the right, okay? And then Q uh lambda Q transpose W star. Okay? So now from here, we can we can take Q and Q transpose as common, right? Because we can write this in the middle and just have Q transpose here. Right? And then we can have Q outside, Q lambda Q transpose W star. Now these two cancel out each other because Q transpose equals to Q inverse. Okay? So we'd get Q epsa- sorry lambda plus alpha i again lambda Q transpose W star. Okay? So now we can make this term as one matrix. So we just write it as Q D Q transpose W star. Where D is lambda plus alpha i into lambda. Okay? So this much is clear? Because I think so far it wa- it has been like simple maths. Uh this much was clear, right? Or any doubts anywhere? Or did I make any mistake somewhere? Anyone please? Okay. So this is what we end up with. So the final uh conclusion is that du- uh W tilde can be written as Q D Q transpose W star. Okay? This is the final conclusion, where D is that. And uh yeah, so Q W Q T uh W star is a multiplication between an N by N matrix and an N by one vector. Because Q is a diagonal matrix, Q W T just have scaled values of W star, okay? So what this means is that hmm, how do I write this? So uh do you do you remember that the eigenvalue matrix is just a matrix? It's just a diagonal matrix, right?
Yes.
So it's just a diagonal matrix, something like this, and then there's zero, 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 something like that, okay? So what we are doing here basically is that we are adding alpha i to each of these terms. So this ends up becoming something like lambda one plus alpha, lambda two plus alpha, lambda three plus alpha, right? And then going ahead, we again multiply this by lambda again. Okay, now this is again lambda. So what would happen? Oh no, wait, 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 wait. I think there's a mistake here. Uh this was an inverse, right? Yeah, see, this was the mistake I was making. Yeah, so this is an inverse part. So this is a reciprocal. Okay? So what would happen because of this is that if it were not an inverse, you'd just multiply these terms by lambda one, lambda two, and lambda three and four, right? But because this is an inverse, what would happen is that you'd end up with lambda one upon lambda one plus alpha, lambda two upon lambda two plus alpha, and so on in the diagonal itself, right? So these are the new diagonal elements that you have and this is D, okay? Uh that's cool. And these are the values that basically scale the values in W star, right? Because W because this is an N by N matrix and W star is a N by one matrix. W star one, W two star and so on. This is an N by one matrix. And D Q W star. What this basically does is that each of these W stars is multiplied by the diagonal, right? So W one would be multiplied by the first element of the diagonal, W two star would be multiplied by the second with the second element of the diagonal and so on. So each of these elements gets scaled by some element of the diagonal, okay? So that's how the weights are affected, right? So both of the diagonals, okay, okay, okay. So thus multiplies each element, okay? Yeah. So again, one more intuition part here. That if this term is really, really big uh than alpha, that any lambda i is extremely big than alpha, so this entire term becomes more or less one, right? Because this is not contributing as much, so this just becomes one, okay? At the same time, if this is at the same time if alpha tends to infinity, then your entire diagonal just ends up becoming zero, right? So you just end up with a zero matrix in the bed in the middle. So alpha can't be something too high. Okay? Because if uh everything is zero, then this entire D term would become zero. And if this entire D term becomes zero, then everything becomes zero, so there would be any no there would be no updates, I think. Or I'm not too sure about that, but I'll have to check, but I think that's the big part, right? Oh no, I should not delete that. Hmm. Hmm yeah. And there was another disc graph here. There's this graph, okay? So what this graph basically shows is that how uh so these dotted lines are W tilde and sorry these dotted concentric circles are for W tilde and this uh eclipse here, these concentric eclipses are for W star, right? So these are the constraints for both of these parameters and we can see that both of them intersect around here, right? And here we can see that uh the weights have changed a lot in the direction of W two, right? Uh which uh we which axis had a lot more shrinkage or growth here. Uh here we can see that both W one, W two have shrunk to W one, W two. Okay, I'll just copy this first maybe. That's a good, that's a better idea. Right? Okay, so here I'll mark everything. So this is W one tilde and this is W two tilde, right? And this was W two star and this was W one star, okay? So here we can see that there's a large difference between W one star and W one tilde and there's not that much of a difference between W two star and W two tilde, right? And this happens because W one is not as much of an important feature as W two, right? Because in the contour lines two, you can see that uh moving in the direction of W two changes the gradients quite fast. While moving in the direction of W one does it. So we have a lot more space So we have a lot more space, we have a lot more freedom in moving in this direction, the horizontal direction and not much in the vertical direction. So that's what we can see in the regularization as well. That the regularized weights have changed in such a manner that they have changed a lot. Uh in the direction of W one, but not as much in the direction of W two, okay? Uh that uh, was that explanation clear? Like, did I ex- did I di- do a good enough job of explaining this thing? Because that's the F N four of regularization. Hello? Am I not audible? Hello? Huh, okay. So apart from this, there's a few more.
Hello.
Yeah. Were you not audible?
Uh actually, it, it was showing here that I have some connectivity issues, so.
Okay. I was just asking whether the uh, whether the explanation made sense.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so that's L two regularization, right? That we end up with this formula and based upon this formula, the weights change a lot, right? So here we can see that W one changed a lot. So it means that if W one changed a lot, then this value must have been a lot larger and this value might have not been that large, okay?
Yeah.
Because that, only that way we can s- uh make sense that uh the output would have uh these kind of changes, right?
Right.
No, 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 maybe I should not say it that way. This value would be less than one, right? And this value, no, no, no. This value would be a smaller fraction than this value, okay? Because both W one and W two have shrunk, but W one has shrunk a lot more than W two, right?
Right.
So this value must be lower than this value, that's why it happened, okay?
Okay.
And then there are a few more regularization methods, so it's data augmentation where that, where you change the data itself. Then there's parameter sharing, injecting noise, injecting noise to inputs, injecting noise to outputs. There's early stopping, then there's ensemble, and then there's dropout. These are things that I don't think need discussion, right?
Yeah, cool.
Then there's unsupervised pre-training, that's like the recent part. Okay, so that's like most of the week sev- week six done, right? Because this was the big part of week six itself.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, it's almost eleven now. Okay, so thanks a lot for joining, uh Sapna did left.
Thank you, thank you for uh explaining things.
Yeah.
You really made it lot clear.
Good enough explanation, because I am.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it was, it was good. Yeah, it was really good, actually.
Okay, I'll just share these notes because these are helpful to even me, because uh. Yeah, so we did skip over a few things, uh I think we'll have to go over that by ourselves. Next week, we can just have P Y Qs itself, like a lot of P Y Qs.
So how do you study for deep learning?
I just watch the lectures.
Sorry?
Just the lectures.
Oh, nothing else?
I watch lectures and I try to code stuff. Like I can maybe show a few things. But that's basically it. Hmm, yeah, this is the vanilla gradient descent stuff I did, I haven't done anything new after this. But this was the, uh I showed you the animation, right?
Yeah.
So I just try to make these kinds of animations that how, you know. These things actually work and try to make sense of the intuition behind stuff and that helps, that's the only thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
S- that's cool.
Yeah, I'll try to do a lot more animations, but now that we are already at week nine, I don't think it will be much help to people.
Oops, uh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so like there's also math stuff, maths is cool, because see, what I think here is that numericals are easy. It's the theory that always, you know, kicks you in the guts, because, because.
Hmm.
It can be anything.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, uh I actually find numerical more difficult than theory. Was like uh numericals need those, that practice, right? Uh it needs that constant practice, but again.